And welcome to the special meeting for the general plan. We are going to get started with the call to order and a pledge of allegiance. So, let's go ahead. You're gonna speak loud. I'm gonna do it so people can hear me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of the active commissioners are here. And this is a continuation of our May 23 general plan hearing. We're gonna get started with a little introduction from Peter.
Thank you, Michelle. Peter Mauer, planning director. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is really to provide an opportunity for those who can't come during the day to be able to provide input. I think that the idea would be somewhat of an open-ended discussion, not focusing on specific elements that we'd get into more thorough deliberation on the next element up tomorrow. That obviously doesn't, wouldn't not prevent anyone from speaking who's been here before, but just really to provide the opportunity for those who can't come during the daytime. Couple of things, just some sort of housekeeping. There are a number of documents that have been provided. And just to sort of go through those, there's the memo from me that had the edits to date. And it might be a good idea to sort of walk through those, just to make sure I captured them all appropriately. There are, there is a document that at the last, last meeting, there was suggestion that there was language from the introduction from an earlier draft of the general plan that could be incorporated using the, how to use the general plan. And so, I've provided that with a few minor edits that I felt were appropriate. And we also have four documents from Commissioner Ladish talking about his suggested edits to the next four elements. The public won't get into a detailed discussion of those, but they're here for the public to have. So, we have to be prepared to discuss those coming up. There's also some discussion on, or some copies of policies relating to agricultural conversion. It was an issue that we sort of left unresolved. I know I'd indicated I would try to work on maybe some edits to come up with it, but after struggling with it for several hours, I decided it would probably better serve to get some more direct input from the commission before I spend a lot of time trying to recraft a document that may or not be included in the final draft. So, either if we have time tonight, we want to get into some further discussion of that, that might be appropriate, or we can carry that over to tomorrow as well. We also received a letter from Colleen Platt representing the Calaveras Planning Coalition and myvalleysprings.com. I think it was sent to all of you. Just want to make sure that you have that that talks about most of the concerns she has regarding that. So, with that, unless you have any questions or suggestions of holding the meeting, I'll turn it back over to you and maybe open up to the public. Oh, the other thing that we really wanted to talk about was the land use map and particularly the recommendation by some members of the public that the future specific plan designation was inappropriate and should be eliminated. And so, the, I know the property owners representing those two properties or representatives representing the property owners are here today and certainly want to provide the opportunity to discuss, discuss that and any other land use map issues that might come up. Do you have any questions of me at this point?
Do you want to run through the summary of changes real quick to the earlier elements? Just for anybody who wasn't able to hear those discussed earlier.
I'm gonna be at a kind of a loss to deal with that if we're gonna deal with it because I couldn't get it printed out. But, so, go ahead and read it for the public to hear what we did.
You can see it, right? In the air as he reads.
I have it on my computer screen. I can let you look at my binder if you'd like to.
It's a Net's copy, I think, right? A Net had a copy that you could use, right there.
Okay, so I got two of them.
And before we get started, we had expected to have our fifth planning commissioner this evening. However, that didn't happen at the board meeting, so now it looks like it'll be a little longer.
Would you like me to have the document up on the screen while I'm going through it as well?
Yeah, I think that would be a lot easier for people to follow along.
So, there are a number of changes that were made on the first page. Changes regarding the introduction of general plan purpose. See those in the first paragraph. There are also a few changes made to the guiding principles. Second sub-bullet of the, first sub-bullet of the second bullet, whatever you want to call that, regarding flexibility. There was also changes made further down under economic development, and that had to do with the, you know, balancing the requirements to conform to state law with the need to pursue economic development and recognizing constitutional property rights. On the next page, under the growth projections, we updated those to be considered with the current numbers that we, we have from the state. There's also some edits to the following paragraph under property rights, protecting those constitutional rights while complying with goals rather than balancing. On page, let's go to that. Page seven, we deleted the last line of the first paragraph under plan separation. And on the last page, we also made some changes regarding the non-conforming use, discussion. The other thing I'm not gonna go over every time, but I've done a global search for the term background. And every time it referred to the background report, I've added the technical background report and put in the URL for people to find it. The first time it's referenced in each element, I will be doing that. Were there any, was there anything that you think I might have missed from your notes or your recollection of the discussion on the introduction?
I think you did a great job of following along with our scattered comments.
Well, thank Julie for her assistance as well.
Ken and Matt, I guess.
Ken and Matt. Okay, so the next one up was the land use. Again, we updated on page two, the, the population information on the table. I also made an edit that was not discussed, but on the very bottom of page two, there was a reference to the Oak Canyon specific plan which no longer exists, so I just took There was under economic development, we also struck the last sentence in that section regarding flexibility as sort of being redundant from what you said. On the table, quite a few changes were made here. I added the last sentence to the first paragraph. This was something that we didn't have in specific language. I hopefully just captured the intent of what was desired here. There are also a couple of minor text changes under resource production. We added resource conservation. We modified the footnoting. And what I found as I was going through the footnotes that they weren't an exact match. There were footnotes that didn't reference anywhere in the document itself. Too many cooks in the soup probably. So, the footnotes at the end are somewhat different than what you saw in the original draft that was presented on, when was that, on Tuesday or Wednesday last week? But, that should reflect accurately what was there.
That's where I think we may have some problems. And I don't know if you want me to go into details now or not.
Sure. The other thing I wanted to note that we did finally correct the mixed-use lands and added the future specific plan and the notes at the end that describe the density and intensity of use for those two areas. Would it be appro, I don't know, if there are just some questions about the footnotes, perhaps it's Ladish, you and I can just sort of meet offline and make those corrections, unless they're substantive that we need to discuss.
That'd be fine with me. I mean, I don't, I don't think everybody here wants to hear footnote H is used to be here and now it's there and now it's, that sort of thing. If, if you and I, yeah, I'd be happy to spend some time.
I think if the rest of the commission's okay with that, we can, we can meet offline and.
As long as they see the end result.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and all of these changes will remain, and I'll make sure that those are shown in the final, final draft as well. Okay, I see a nodding of head for everyone.
Well, he can be a committee of one.
On the consistency table, you included, and the map is now updated. Thank you, Colleen, for pointing out the fact that we still didn't have the right one up online. We finally did get it up. So, the consistency table, we added rural residential as being consistent with the working lands and the transition A, and also added recreation as a consistent use with the resource management designation. Under the goals and policies, modified land use one, the goal land use one, and we struck Further down on page 17, a new policy was added, land use 4.11, encourage community participation, input in implementing policies under goal LU4. LU 5.3, we reverse went back to the language that was in the previous draft. Made some edits to the implementation measure, LU1A, that talked about going to the board on a regular basis to set priorities and ensure funding is available to implement the plan. I think we had quite a bit of discussion on community character. We added the phrase after soliciting input from the community. There was, wasn't sure, there was some discussion about and giving weight to that, and my recollection was that that phrase was not included in the final version. I just want to make sure. And we struck the, the phrase, and without establishing a designer view committee. In measure LU5A, replaced should with shall and added, whereas masking is feasible and will use visual impacts regarding telecommunications facilities. Under home businesses, we wanted to make sure that while we want to encourage economic development, we also want to protect the land use of neighboring properties, so we added the phrase while minimizing impacts to neighbors. Modified the community input, was originally professional relationship, you change out to community and professional input, and modified the text of that. And that was the list of my changes to the land use element, because I capture everything there. On the circulation element, next one up. There was some additional language that Commissioner Ladish had suggested that we worked with a little bit. And this was when I wasn't sure if this needed to go in the first paragraph, the fourth paragraph, or both. I ended up putting in the first paragraph. I hope this captured the essence of what was trying to be said. We have a lot of other changes. On page three, we added some language that sort of helped clarify the transportation concept reports of Caltrans, that these are sort of long-term planning documents, that they don't necessarily have plans today to widen these roads, but that would be their ultimate goal.
Now, on that, that sentence in the introduction, I think it does better belong in the fourth paragraph. It's where I suggested it go.
Okay.
And then, the fourth paragraph is talking about the variations within the county. If you insert that, that, what I suggested was that we insert that sentence after the second sentence of the fourth paragraph.
These community principal connections via rural road system of state highways and county roads, almost exclusively two-lane.
Right. And then, then in this very terrain.
It, it doesn't really matter to me. I'm happy to make that change if that's the desire of the commission.
Fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't you think that, I'm trying to think, we had any other edits to any of the policies or implementation measures? And I don't think we did. So, the last element that we've then worked on is, was the resource production element. the first change was an implementation program on page nine. And when it came to county code amendments, modify the last bullet there regarding the 30-foot, or 300 to 500-foot buffer and who would be reviewing those proposals. Again, I wasn't quite sure whether or not we struck the, or other recognized authority I thought that we had, but I wasn't quite certain.
We did, as far as I know.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure.
And also, actually missed something. In the second sentence of that bullet, when you get down to the third line and the word plantings along the boundary, the same parenthetical phrase was to be inserted there as it was up above, on lands within the development area. I don't think there was any disagreement on that.
Where, where was that supposed to be?
So, the, the second sentence, if such a buffer is deemed infeasible by the county, require a combination of a lesser buffer, tall fencing, and tree plantings along the boundary parentheses, on lands within the development area.
We did not come to any resolution on RP1E. And so, maybe we'll come back to that in a moment. Just want to see if there's any other edits that we did, and it does not appear that we, we did.
So, there's, there's one thing on RP4A where, there's just an extra hyphen here. The second bullet, it should be just parentheses, capital M, capital E, close parentheses without the minus.
The hyphen is sort of how we designate.
Oh, is it?
Combining zones.
Oh, no kidding.
So, if you have like a RA hyphen NE, that's how we designate it. So, that's why I added the hyphen.
Well, thank you. Being educated constantly.
Probably not necessary, but consistent.
Show off.
It looks like then, other than those couple of changes, we've captured them all so far. And I'll turn it back over to the commission, what you'd like to tackle next.
I think we should go ahead and maybe take some comments from the public, unless you guys have questions or anything you want to share.
No, I don't have any questions. I think we should take comments from the public and then probably get into the future specific plan.
Yep.
Matter.
Okay, so, just one moment, please. So, those of you have, who have not been able to attend a meeting yet, we'd like to go ahead and get your comments first. I think there'll be plenty of time for everybody to have an opportunity to comment, but I know that there are a number of people who haven't been at the earlier hearings, so. So, this is your chance. Hop up.
Commission, my name is Bob Brunker. I'm here representing Rancheria Del Rio de Stanislas LLC and Brunker Land and Cattle LLC. On May 6 of this year, my family celebrated 79 years of ownership of our property that is in Calaveras County and Stanislas County. We have been operating a beef cattle grazing business the entire 79 years. When the new Tolic Dam was completed in the late 50s, we suddenly had a very substantial amount of property that bordered the newly created lake. As we granted flowage easements, in consideration of future development potential, we were aware that this portion of our property had very good potential for future development. This property we have owned for 79 years has always had a future single-family residential five-acre land designation. We have for 79 years had the option for development with the future single-family residential five-acre land use designation. We have been paying taxes every year on property with this designation. To put a land use designation of resource production on our property at this time would make our goals and intentions much harder or impossible to realize. This would also devalue our property very significantly. So, in summary, we do not agree with or desire to have any of our parcels in Calaveras County land use designation reduced to resource production or any other lesser designation from what we currently have. Per your land use descriptions on your website, it appears that rural transition B, RTB, is closest to what we currently have and would be acceptable and fair. And believe me, I've been approached, approached by many conservation people to put our land in conservation easement, and the answer's always been the same. No, thank you. That's not our plan, that's not, has not been our goals. So, thank you for listening and thank you for understanding our position.
Hi. My name is George Burkhardt. I don't know Mr. Bunker. I've never seen him before, but I was very interested in his comments, and I'd like to add to those. I grew up in the 50s and 60s in the Catskill Mountains in New York State. In some ways, very similar to here, except more rural. If we had one industry, and we really only had one at that time, it was single-family dairy farms. That industry's gone. They financially can't make it anymore. But similar to Calaveras County, you still have paved roads and other infrastructure that's very, very expensive to maintain in a very small population. I guess you could call it economically depressed area. How do you pay for all that without it being a hardship on the few people that live there? And what they did in the Catskills was they made it a mini tourist area, like the Bay Area and us here, two and a half hour drive from Times Square, New York. So, all those people in cars and buses would come to the Catskills, called the Borscht Belt and the Jewish Alps, and entertainers got their start in Grossinger's Hotel and the Concord. You know, people by the name of Dean Martin, Jerry Lewis, and Henny Youngman, and scores of other people. And those tourists would come to our very, very rural area, and they'd bring money. And they would leave their money, and then they would get back in their cars and their buses, and they would go back to New York City. And we were just happy, 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 right? We didn't have to expand our schools or anything else. All we had to do was be welcoming and accommodating. If we do what Mr. Bunker describes, and we take our available properties and we lock it up as resource development. it up as resource development, we don't let businesses that want to support and accommodate tourists, we lose that whole opportunity here for the many, many people who don't have sources of employment. And a good tourist industry with a little bit of planning can be properly managed, and it can be a gold mine and still preserve the beautiful area that we have. That's the only point I want to make to you. I grew up there, I saw it firsthand, and not a lot has changed even to this day. My little hometown of Miles's, New York, when I lived there, had a population of about fifty people. Today, my brother-in-law told me it's seventy-two, but most of them are not full-time residents. It's a vacation home. They don't have kids in school, they come up, they enjoy their vacation home, they spend money, and they go away. And the roads that have to be repaired more than here because there's snow and ice, they have the revenue to take care of all those things. So I encourage you to support businesses, support what you can. For example, I believe there are people here tonight that are going to talk about what used to be Saddle Creek. Got to have lodging there, got to do some things and allow tourists to come to this area. It'll be to everyone's benefit. Thank you very much.
Next, is there anybody else who would like to speak to the commission?
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow planning commissioners. My name is Tom Hicks, I'm a partner in CV Development Partners, the development manager for the Copper Valley Partner LLC, the entity that purchased all of the Castle Cook Holdings in November of 2018. First, I would like to thank Peter Maurer for working cooperatively with me over the past couple of days to prepare for this meeting tonight. I have a detailed letter that I would like to submit to the commission and place into the public record. Since the letter is too lengthy to read and the limited time allotted, I'll focus my verbal comments on the highlights and high points of the letter. The 243-acre sawmill property has a substantial history with the county. Originally envisioned as a part of the Copperopolis Town Square development, but it was separated due to a delay in the Army Corps 404 processing. The proposed entitlements by Castle Cook were denied by the board in 2013 without prejudice. Anticipating the updated general plan, it was always envisioned the project would be resubmitted as soon as the GP is approved, and therefore the future specific plan designation is critical. There has been an excess of $9 million spent on the acquisition and processing of the sawmill property. This is in addition to the $53 million spent in developing the town square. In 2003, the 3,251-acre Oak Canyon Ranch property, which borders the sawmill property, was approved for a specific plan, which provided for over 2,200 residential units, two golf courses, and 300,000 square feet of commercial. In December 2018, the Oak Canyon Ranch approvals were terminated and the property was placed into permanent open space. This leaves a void of anticipated development adjacent to the town square. Additional development in and around the area of the town square is critical to the economic success of the project. It is imperative that the sawmill project be allowed to be developed in the future specific plan designation. A specific plan overlay is critical to attracting investment capital into your county. In my letter, I'm requesting that the commission reconsider the removal of four important parcels within the sawmill holdings. This is not for the purpose of developing a larger project, but for proper planning purposes and to allow an abundance of open space in the community areas within the plan. I would think that the commission would want to set a high bar for the percentage of open space in a specific plan. This can only be done by including the additional four parcels. Additionally, the four parcels will allow more functional circulation plan to be created within the community. The sawmill property is one of few parcels within Copperopolis that can accommodate a higher-density, more affordable residential product. The property is adjacent to existing commercial, infrastructure, and state highway four. In particular, there is a great demand for senior housing in Copperopolis with the aging demographic. The town center will have a medical facility soon and is an ideal location for independent and assisted living, as well as variety of other residential opportunities. I would like to thank you for your consideration to our requests. It's our goal to keep the rural character of Copperopolis, but also develop an economically viable community. And I'm going to pass out to Peter here, plenty of copies that I have of the letter. I think you needed at least six, Peter, is that right? Thank you very much.
I have two displays, which is the best way to show those?
How can we accommodate those displays?
Hold them up to the commission and then have.
Yeah, you can do that.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Mike Fletcher, and I'm also a partner along with Tom Hicks and CV Development Partners. Our group acquired the Castle Cook properties, including the Saddle Creek Golf Course and residential lots, the 1,770-acre Copper Valley Ranch, the 42-acre Vineyard Estates, the unfinished Copperopolis Town Square, and finally, the 243-acre future specific plan referred to as Sawmill Lake. Both of the resort and the town square are not sustainable without additional development. Since November of last year, we started designing a new 30-unit hotel in the town square, began designing an outdoor event center, started final designs for a clubhouse remodel at Saddle Creek, began renovation of the Saddle Creek Golf Course, brought in new management for the golf course and clubhouse, began designing the next new homes to be built in Saddle Creek, began preliminary engineering and environmental review of Sawmill, and employed many consultants and local staff. Tens of millions have been spent on the acquisition, and many millions more are being invested by the new partnership. We believe in Copperopolis and its role as serving as a designated area for smart, sensitive growth. We are committed to improving schools and services, update and enhance the impacts to infrastructure, protect and enhance the rural character of the area, increase the amenities to the community, and provide a diversity of housing and provide job opportunities. This first one represents Oak Canyon Ranch shown in the orange, which was 3,251 acres or 3,475 total units. The subdivision had been converted to natural resources and added to the Williamson Act, as you're aware. Additionally, Castle and Cook, oh, I'm sorry, additionally, Castle and Cook had planned on bringing forward the Copper Ranch Project, which includes 1,700 acres of development and additional 2,400 units. This property is also not moving forward in the general plan's update. Combined, these projects represent almost 5,000 acres or 5,875 new homes that were planned for development and will not be moving forward in the new general plan. That is around 22% of the total acreage of Copperopolis. Their impacts to traffic, infrastructure, and sewer water and the quality of impacts have been eliminated since those projects aren't moving forward. Sawmill, let's switch to the other one. Sawmill is contiguous to the town square. We envision elderly care, diversity of housing, and other uses that will enable proper and sound growth and enable the town square to grow and meet the needs of the community. The Castle Cook design was brought forward until the general plan, or was denied until the general plan was completed. We acquired Sawmill with the understanding it was included in the general plan update as future specific plan. We have reviewed the new proposed designation of Sawmill. Although part was designated correctly as future specific plan, a portion of approximately 103 acres were not included, and it's shown in the red. We request this commission review these missing parcels and include them as future specific plan along with the other Sawmill parcels. With the reduction of almost 5,000 acres of development and almost 5,900 units in Copperopolis that are gone, this request is reasonable and consistent with the general plan elements. Thank you for your review and we would appreciate your comments on this.
I have a question then. What, you say you understood that it would be included as a future specific plan, I think you said?
Right.
What was the basis of that?
Well, parts of it, my understanding, parts of it were included in the specific, had a specific plan designation on it. Part of it does now, in the upcoming, it's the area that's in green. The other areas were, are not included, and I believe, we, Castle and Cook's in a letter in August referring to this, and the first I became aware, we closed in November, and then it was in April where we found out what the parcels were and those kinds of things, and that's why we're here today, because we thought that these would be included as a part of that.
Greg Meyer, Copperopolis. I'd like to present my perspective regarding the future specific plan and the resource land management land use designations in the Copperopolis Basin. It appears there has been a mapping area that just addressed, because only a portion of the Sawmill Lake project has future specific plan designation. The San Quinetti Ranch area, I believe, is correct. The commission saw the value of that designation and did leave the door open for the San Quinetti property because of imminent purchase and submittal of an application. I see Ron Kopp is here tonight and the owners, and I'll let them address that. On the other hand, last November, as you just heard, the new ownership came to all of the former Castle and Cook properties, along with financing, vision, and expressed intent. Completion of the town square in the Sawmill Lake project is critical to the Copperopolis area for many reasons, including a sewer line that goes nowhere at this time. This is a job-creating, economic-growth-promoting project, providing more affordable housing, TOT, sales tax, property tax, with a conceptual plan for RV park, timeshare units, the event center, and hotel with tourism packages to visit big trees, concerts, or our Calaveras wine-growing area, to name a few. It's unreasonable and poor planning to not leave the door open for a fair and honest discussion of the completion of this 243-acre project. We in the Copperopolis community do not want rural sprawl. We desire a well-planned and mixed-use development. We want a dramatic, healthy economy, so our working families and our children do not have to move outside of the area to find work. I volunteer much time and effort over the years at the county's request, most directly related to the planning for the Copperopolis Basin. I've served on the Copperopolis community plan efforts for over a decade and a half, the 2020 Vision Study, Planning Study. I served on the Lake Tullock Task Force effort, coordinating the efforts between the county, FERC, and TRIDAM. I facilitated the efforts with the Morrissey Property, the Bureau of Reclamation, county supervisors, to create the option of a road to New Malones. I've been a member of the Copperopolis Parks and Reds Group. I've worked for the EPA, I've been a county fish and game commissioner. I find it inappropriate that paid lobbyists from outside of our community dictate what happens in our community. I also find it inappropriate the designation for the Copper Valley Ranch Brunker Project and the Vineyard Estates Project, as resource production with layers of punitive anti-growth mitigation attached to that. I also wonder, why does Copperopolis not have a community plan? And how can the county's vision for Copperopolis be so different than the community's vision? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Ron Kopp, I'm speaking on behalf of the San Quinetti Ranch, their specific plan designation in the Calaveras County proposed general plan. The general plan is intended to guide the growth and development of Calaveras County until the year approximately 2040. Although this general plan is based on the assumption that Calaveras County will reach a projected population, it does not promote the growth of the county's population to that level. What the general plan does do is prepare Calaveras County to be able to accommodate that projected growth. While at the same time adhering to policies that define where and how development will occur, the general plan provides guidance in determining the appropriate or desirable locations for this growth, thereby preventing unnecessary scattered pattern of growth. It has been well documented that we have a severe lack of housing in our state, and Calaveras County is no different. The proposed mixed-use infill resort community envisioned for the San Quinetti property was studied for over five years while the county has been updating the general plan. The specific plan provided for a resort destination with recreation focus and a secondary residential component with significant open space that is very much in line with your Board of Supervisors stated economic goals for Calaveras County for the next 20 years. Calaveras County supervisors have also stated they want to improve job creation and find ways to retain our talented younger population that are moving away from the area where they grew up and want to live. One common denominator that almost all county organizations and agencies agree on is that more destination elements are needed in the county to attract and retain additional tourists, and to enhance the economic vitality of the area and provide sustainable working opportunities. Tourism is one of the top economic drivers in and around Calaveras County. The San Quinetti property was designated for development in the 1996 general plan, and the proposed Calaveras County general plan needs to properly designate and plan for mixed-use destination resort plan communities in key areas. Desirable tourism-based destinations provide a multitude of uses and assets that interrelate and play a role in support the desirability of this overall county as a destination. Amenities, recreation, and open areas are incorporated and intermixed with hotel accommodations, restaurants, housing, and commercial areas. Unfortunately, the uses found in mixed-use destination resort master plan communities do not fit typical general plan designations or zoning. These uses are typically then rigidly separated into distinct areas. This does not work for resort development that's trying to intermix those type of units. This reduces flexibility and innovation and makes it difficult for planners, county staff, planning commissioners, and supervisors to accommodate projects using outdated regulations that try and force a square peg into a round hole. Retaining the specific plan designation for the San Quinetti Ranch in the proposed general plan that was supported by staff in a previous planning commission will facilitate the viability of a project this county wants and needs to enhance the economic vitality of the area. The 913-acre portion of the San Quinetti Ranch is well-located to provide one of the best destination resort locations in the county. Specific reasons for requesting the general plan designations be left as they were previously proposed are: The property has frontage and direct access from a Burns Ferry Road and a very desirable frontage on Lake Tullock and the Stanislas River. Approximately 2.4 miles of the property front on a Burns Ferry Road, which is a main circulation corridor through Calaveras County from Tuolumne County out to Fort. In addition to good road access, this property has access to water and sewer. CCWD has adequate water rights and commitments. The proposed uses and housing density are compatible with the adjacent Poker Flat neighborhood. The resort and recreation components will enhance tourism and provide for economic development. The 913 acres is not in Williamson Act, nor was land ever in Williamson Act. This land has always been slated for development when market conditions allow. The balance of the adjacent ranch lands have been placed in Williamson Act and have active cattle grazing. The conceptual mixed-use resort plan will still require a great deal of additional study and approvals as part of future EIR and entitlement process. If the general plan removes or downgrades the proposed specific plan, land use designations for the approximate 913 acres will have a very detrimental effect on the time and effort needed to undertake any future entitlement process to bring this to fruition. Mixed-use resort communities generate less traffic than the county standard 10 car trips, and the location provides outstanding views. Please retain this in your designation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
The, right near the end of your talk, you mentioned how different land use designations would create great costs and pain. If you would elaborate on that, is that...
Is your question relating to typical zoning and general plan designations?
Well, I'm trying to get what, I mean, maybe I didn't understand. What you said was something along the lines of typical land use designations would be a very bad thing, and I'm trying, I just would like a little...
Yeah, what you have to do when you're looking at different resorts, and a lot like what Saddle Creek has done and others, is when you're trying to combine recreation components, golf courses, amenities, hotels, all of those components, when you typically look at commercial designations, C1 and others, they all have setbacks, and it's very tough to interrelate those and mix those entities into that. And as you do the planning, you put... And as you do the planning, you put those together, and if you try and put all this rigid zoning on it, you end up with a very cookie-cutter design. It doesn't allow the innovation. It doesn't allow you to incorporate true mixed-use, well-designed and developed projects.
I understand, good point, but to change a standard land use designation would take a change, amendment to the general plan, but to accomplish that, it's the same thing you need in order to get an approval of a specific plan.
Well, and that's what the specific plan is looking at that's related to in the general plan over this property. It allows that flexibility for this property to come back in and provide that plan with the flexibility, and then it still has to go through the entire EIR process. There's a lot of environmental review with the open space and everything else. So there's still a number of steps that have to go through that process. What this allows it to happen is not have to go back in and all of a sudden add a whole bunch of general plan and zoning changes. On top of that, it works within the existing framework that's been overlaid on that property to begin with.
Well, couldn't you, at the same time that you're seeking approval from the Board of Supervisors for the specific plan, couldn't you, at the same time, with the same vote, or at the same time, amend the general plan?
Obviously, you can always do that. That adds another step to the process and an uncertain step to that process. So if you have an overall framework that the project can work within, then you can bring that in, and you have a lot better understanding of how to go forward, and it streamlines that process moving forward that you can work underneath.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it possible to blow up that area so we can see it? What is the teal-colored area?
Teal-colored?
That's right there, well, that blue-green area between the orangish maize color and the bright yellow. Do you want me to go into my colors?
Let me just walk through. So this lighter green color here is the resource production designation. This green color here is working land. I'm getting there, right there, is the rural transition A, which is a 10 to 20-acre minimum parcel size. This, whatever color that is...
That's the future specific plan.
No, 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 that is the residential low-density, typical single-family home, one to six units per acre. This crosshatch area here is the future specific plan, and that's the area that Sanguenetti Ranch, that the gentleman just spoke, has interest in.
Audit.
This area, the darker brown, is medium-density residential, and this pale color here, it almost shows up the same as green, it's sort of a pale mauve color, I guess, on my screen, is the rural residential, which is one to five acres.
And what are the red, those are commercial, right?
Commercial's red. Blue is industrial, I believe. I'm not sure why that's industrial.
CCWD.
Oh, no, that's public, thank you. That's a public land, that's CCWD. This is an existing approved project, and I think that that actually should be low-density residential. I think there was a mistake, there was some different things. This is the Tuscanese project, it's already approved.
And is the property of the first speaker tonight on that?
The first speaker, Mr. Bunker?
Hello.
It's...
Sawmill.
This was the property, this is the, was referred to as Copper Valley Ranch, that Castle &amp; Cook had interest in previously, and I believe the Bunker property is further to the southwest here. Am I correct?
Oh, yeah.
All of this area here.
Thank you.
Zoom out a little bit if that helps you get a better perspective.
This attachment map, it kind of appears that this was pointing to this. That's why I was discombobulated by it. Really? I thought it was this whole thing over here.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Lynn Sanguenetti, and I just want to agree with everything that Ron said, with all the information in the comments that he provided to you. And these are just a few of my comments, just to let you know a little history of the property. In the late 1940s, my great uncle Joe Sanguenetti purchased the property known as the Gorm Ranch in the Copropolis area. This property has been held by my family for five generations. The property has always been slated for potential development by my family. Over the years, several developers had shown interest in development, including the Bechtel Group, and as most recently, the Yosemite Lakes Group. This property currently consists of approximately 2,500 acres, which 1,700 acres are in the Williamson Act and actively raising beef cattle. This should not hinder any opportunity for future development, which could provide for sustainable working opportunities. The remaining 903 acres are not in the Williamson Act. The 903 acres are situated at the southern entrance to Calaveras County by entering from Tuolumne County and is adjacent to Poker Flat and all residential communities up to Peninsula Estates. The east side of the property borders Lake Tullock, and on the west side is bordered along O'Burns Ferry Road. The general plan states that it seeks to promote economic prosperity and respect private property rights. In the future, we would like to have the opportunity to plan for a positive and creative long-range plan for this property and the community. In the 1996 Calaveras County general plan, land use designated the specific portion of the ranch for future development, which includes road easements and encroachments. These designations created a huge potential and interest for future development. With this designation already approved, we relied on it for our future planning. I respectfully request that the board retain the specific plan designation on the 913 acres as proposed in the current general plan. Thank you.
If the Commission's interested, I can also sort of toggle back and forth on the here, if you want to look at what the old plan said, or current zoning, or any other information, we have that available.
Has anybody else who hasn't spoken before, would you like to come up and speak, or should we go ahead and let those folks who've been attending get up here?
As I said the last meeting and the meeting before that, the map out there has been out there, and it's supposed to be the map that was going to go with the general plan. And the people that, like me, that have looked at those lots and things and their zonings have counted on that happening. And now, they're talking about putting things into a totally different category from residential to resource, which is not fair to do this at the last minute, as you get ready to pass the general plan. And I find myself very disturbed about it, and if my neighbors who don't have houses on their property knew about it or know about it, I'm sure that they would be very concerned and upset. And I don't think that it's fair to do that to my neighbors, even though they don't live there, or to me. And on top of that, I find that, like these other people said, they want to create a community, or they want to have a resort aspect to it, and I believe that's something that Calaveras County can offer other people that don't live here, that are looking for a reset. And they come here, they get their reset, and they go back to their work, and they do better. And I have seen it down at Comanche, where people have come as a group or singly, and they reset, and then they go back, and they're able to do a better job and have a better life, and have something to look forward to the next year. I have known, when Comanche's had 48,000 people in one weekend, and I brought it to somebody's attention to try to get the road fixed, well, that gave East Bay Mud the opportunity to, oh, we mustn't have that many people. So all those people from Oakland and the Bay Area that came there year after year and lined up so that they could sit on the swimming lake, or boat, or do whatever they wanted, were excluded. So I think that that's a real tragedy, that those people can't come here and do that like they used to, and it makes it, to me, needful for us to make other places potentially available for resorts or whatever, and have that aspect potential for our land. And so, like I said, I'm very disturbed, and I know that my neighbors probably do not know about this.
Good evening, Tom Vasino, speaking on behalf of myself. I need to apologize to the Planning Commission for not being here last Thursday. While driving on the way to the Planning Commission hearing last Thursday, my vehicle was hit by an incoming vehicle and plowed into the ditch on the side of Highway 49. At the time, I presented with clammy skin, I passed out for two minutes, I had a blood pressure of 175 over 90, I had presented with symptoms of ruptured spleen and kidney, and my whole left side was numb. The helicopter medevac me out to Roseville Memorial Hospital, wherein they did x-rays and an MRI. They demonstrated that there were no broken bones and no ruptured organs. They removed some shrapnel from my hand, and that was the extent of it. I'm here today for three reasons. One, seat belts. Two, airbags. Three, the saving power of a merciful God. The takeaway message for people who've been working on this general plan so hard for the last several years, and who've hoped desperately for the passage of a lawful general plan, and its prompt implementation is simple. Miracles happen. Keep hope alive. I'm living proof. Thank you, God bless you, and God bless the good people of Calaveras County.
Joyce Tekel, I was going to present this at the beginning of the meeting, but it didn't unfold that way, but I'm good. I am a resident and property owner in District 1. I would like it on the record that I protest this meeting proceeding without a duly-appointed District 1 Planning Commissioner present. At the May 28, 2019, Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting, Supervisor Toffinelli pulled Agenda Item 35, which would have been the item for appointing the new District 1 Planning Commissioner. By this supervisor's action, the matter will not be resolved for another two weeks. When the general plan update hearings are concluded, there will have been no District 1 Commissioner at a single general plan public hearing, and there will be no Commissioner to break a 2-2 deadlock vote. I foresee some 2-2 votes on the draft general plan, as we have already seen unfold in recent discussions at the last two Planning Commission hearings. How does this bode well? How does this represent District 1? And is this a viable and legal path forward for the Calaveras County general plan update? It was important for me to get that on the record. Now, my other comments are related to the circulation element, which should come as no surprise to you folks, because I'm a rural person. Today, you received an email from the CPC including general plan provisions and mitigation measures for you to consider, including in the circulation element. These provisions have been proposed by the CPC during the last six years of this general plan update process. These proposed general plan provisions deal with important issues, including traffic congestion management, public transit, infrastructure financing, heavy truck traffic in residential neighborhoods, emergency evacuation, mobility plans, dealing with the challenges in Copropolis, as well as the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians. Please consider these general plan provisions and mitigation measures. Being able to get around safely and efficiently in this county is more than a matter of economic necessity. It is often a matter of life and death. By hearing and considering these proposals, you will demonstrate your respect for the importance of these issues. Thank you for your time.
My name's Marie Wright, and I'm here for the Calaveras Planning Coalition tonight. Today, you received an email from the CPC that included general plan provisions and mitigation measures for you to consider, including in the land use element. These provisions have been proposed by the CPC during the last six years of the general plan update process. Some suggestions would modify provisions of the draft general plan update, and some suggestions would add new provisions to the general plan update. These proposed general plan provisions deal with many issues of substance, including community plans, community boundaries, the subdivision of agriculture lands, cluster development, community aesthetics, avoiding development sprawl, ensuring adequate infrastructure for development, scenic resource protection, historic design standards, and economic development. These provisions also deal with the need for mandatory language and mitigation measure policies and implementations. They deal with the need for mitigation menus, objective standards, and certain deadlines for deferred mitigation programs. Please consider these general plan provisions and mitigation measures. Having communities' concerns heard and considered in a public forum is a meaningful part of this general plan update process. Thank you for your time.
Ron Wilson for the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Today, you received an email including general plan provisions and mitigation measures for you to consider, including the resource production element. The provisions have been proposed by the CPC during the last six years of this general plan update process, and are awaiting public hearing. The proposed general plan provisions deal with the issues that are at the heart of what makes Calaveras County landscape special to people who live, work, and visit here, to deal with the conservation of rangelands, excuse me, conservation of rangeland in the county in which over half of your rangeland, nearly 200,000 acres, has dropped out of production in the last 20 years, according to your own 2014 background report, to deal with the conservation of valuable mineral lands, the lands that first made this county famous during the gold rush. Please hear and consider these general plan provisions and mitigation measures. Over the years, the CPC and county have differed on these subjects. Nevertheless, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution entitles all Americans the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances. We ask you to embrace that right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Um, I, Peter, I sent two letters today. Did you only get one?
Um, I thought it was a resent of the same one letter.
You got two, two different ones.
I got one.
You got one. I, I sent two different ones, one at about eight this morning and one about twelve or one or something.
And then that second one you had, you resent.
I resent it because you could open it. Yeah, right. Okay. I'm, I'm going to try to address both of them in my five minutes in a brief, very brief manner, but as long as you have the hard copies. Uh, the first, um, comment is a request to revise, revisit policy LU one point six issues in the land use element. Um, the Planning Commission had mixed feelings about that last week. They eventually pulled it, but they asked the public for suggestions, so we sent you some suggestions on rewording that. Um, uh, we pointed out that the paragraph in, um, the land use section, page LU five, that explains community areas and boundaries and the purpose for them to condense the development and keep that in certain areas. Um, the last sentence reads the boundaries of the community areas are intended to be specific. Um, uh, these community area boundaries are an important, important foundation of the entire two thousand nineteen draft general plan and land use map. Um, they focus general plan, uh, new development in and around in existing communities and reducing impacts of sprawls. But there are no clear land use goals in the element that state that. They desire to focus growth and development in existing community areas. And there are no specific policies that guide that. The, the way to discourage community area boundaries from being blurred and event endlessly expanded. Um, LU one point six was intended as this mitigation for that. Um, we've, um, it leaves a deficiency by taking that out of there. You're not covering that now. So we've suggested a couple, some wordings for a new goal and wordings for a new policy. We hope you discuss this again, bring this up. Um, our suggestion briefly is to put under land use patterns, a new goal. New development is directed to areas within or adjacent to existing community areas to reduce the significant impacts of sprawling build-out on resources and rural values. And a policy that could implement that, or not implement it, but would support that would be before expansion of community areas and boundaries and before considering proposed changes to land use designations with new higher density or intensity uses outside of community areas require findings that additional land is necessary to meet the housing or employment needs of the community. Um, and this language doesn't shackle supervisors. It gives them guidance, which is what they need when they're having a general plan amendment come before them. So please consider that. The second, um, comments that we sent in were regarding requesting a correction in the land use element and an addition of an additional, um, implementation measure. On page two of the land use element, the third paragraph down, the last line says more detailed descriptions and history of these and other communities are included in the community planning element of the general plan. This sentence is extremely inaccurate. The, um, communities of Valley Springs, Copperopolis, Murphys, Arnold, and Avery that are referenced in that paragraph have absolutely no descriptions or history included in the community planning element or anywhere in the draft general plan. This can be fixed with the addition of community plan reference documents in, in the general plan. Um, and just add a sentence, you know, about rescinded and draft community plans located in general plan reference documents. And we understand the direction of the board in two thousand fifteen was to, um, do these plans later, basically. But, um, we're extremely concerned about that because there's nothing in this general plan that says they will do that. So we would like something to be put in land use goals and policies that states and implements this intention. Um, and also these five communities have nothing in the general plan to inform the public or investors or developers about their history, about their character, or their visions for growth and development. Something needs to be in the general plan to cover these communities. We sent an implementation measure we'd like you to consider. This has been submitted to the county before. Uh, a measure LU four I, existing rescinded, updated, and draft community plans. This would be the text. Some communities and their community plans have not been included in the community planning element. The county intends to revise and adopt these plans into the general plan at a later date. Meanwhile, rescinded and existing draft new community plan documents are included in the general plan in general plan reference documents as placeholders to help inform planners and developers about existing community and historical character, unique resources, community history, and specific community policies that have helped guide development and protected the community in the past. And until these community plans can be revised, updated, and adopted, refer to them in the community plan element as placeholders until those community plans can be revised and adopted. Please have this implementation program to actually commit the county to doing these plans and to give these five communities a placeholder in the general plan in the meantime.
I think we'll be discussing that more. I don't know if we'll get to it tomorrow, but.
Good evening. John Buckley, CSIRK. Timing in land planning is important and timing matters. Uh, many of the speakers who've spoken tonight have underscored vividly with their details about their projects that they are desiring the general plan to ease approval through land use designations that will make their development more likely. And the projects mentioned that included Vineyard Estates, Copper Valley Ranch, Sanguinetti Ranch, and Sawmill. As Peter and you as commissioners know, the purpose of a general plan is not to prejudge or to promote individual development projects. And legally speaking, the EIR is not intended to analyze the effects of changing land use designations to favor projects. In reality, if the land use designations, as our center already addressed in our lawyer's, uh, letter, for Sawmill and Sanguinetti are made as is proposed, it will affect the vulnerability of the plan. And you want a plan that not only will stand, but that all of these people can then bring their projects forward and have their projects considered based on having a new, strong general plan that is legal and defensible. Pre-designation for major development sites in the EIR triggers a requirement for appropriate discussion in the EIR and adoption of feasible mitigation measures. It's a no-brainer. Neither of which has been done in this instance for any of the developments. In moving to complete the county's new general plan, the county should wait to assess the merits of proposed developments talked about tonight until after the general plan becomes an approved document and then bring them forward and let them be judged. And if they stand, so be it. Each of the projects discussed tonight can be brought forward over general plan approval. The last thing with the remaining time is, because I'm not able to be here tomorrow, at some point you'll be discussing in conservation and open space greenhouse gas emissions and whether or not there's a climate action plan, um, with a date certain. As was put forward, whether or not you believe there's greenhouse gas emissions or all these things, the state has requirements. And the Attorney General Office letter that was in our attorney's, uh, letter to you directs counties to adopt the plan by a date certain, incorporate interim policies, and adopt feasible mitigation measures. Whether you choose to support the wording that Commissioner Latish has put forward or you have different wording that you prefer, all our center is saying is it's important to please do what the state has directed, that there needs to be a plan with some sort of clear deadline, interim measures for how you'll mitigate for projects in the meantime, and feasible mitigation measures. So thank you. Um, I understand that many people have strong reasons that they want to see things accomplished. I urge you to get this plan approved and have a defensible plan so projects can be brought forward. Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. If you said it's important not to prejudge and that cuts both ways. Um, and I'm wondering, I understand the expectations of the people who want to develop this property and, and as, as presented to us, they are saying that it was, uh, that when it was being considered before, it was mainly, uh, put off in order to get the general plan on the books. What would you suggest be the designation we should put on these properties so we don't prejudge against these people?
So defer into your planning director. An example, I believe you're talking about Sawmill. Sawmill has multiple different designations, including a resource production area that has been shifted to future specific plan or whatever and not changing those, but keeping them as they were prior to this plan being now brought forward for the, uh, approval is not making any prejudgment one way or the other. And so that's the answer from that.
And I, I have to get my facts straight too, is that, that the land use plan that was developed years ago for this general plan had designations in it that were other than, uh, pre-special, uh, specific plan or what's the term?
The nineteen ninety-six plan, I think, had kind of a.
No, I'm talking about the, this land use map. When it was first put out there, what, what was the designations that were on this map for those properties?
That's something that your planning director can share, but there have been, just because I've been at different meetings where there have been, including in Copperopolis, where there have been town hall meetings, there have been different land use maps that have been put up with different things throughout. The question is, what does the existing current general plan show for land use designations compared to what is now being proposed in this general plan? And what are the changes? And as in the staff report and our center already supported, all of those thirteen or whatever they were that are included in the staff report with specific reasons why it makes sense to make those, I've never heard anyone object to any of those because they're all ones that are correcting problems or there's all these key reasons why they're minor and not something that has potential to affect sewer lines, to, uh, um, result in, uh, new land use circulation changes. All of these things need to be looked at basically on their own merits and very much in detail.
So I guess in answer to my first question, what land use designations would you put on this property rather than the one that is now showing on the map? It would be whatever was on there before these applicants came forward? Is that what you're saying?
Okay. I'm not sure which applicants because there's very different parcels.
There is no current application. That's the, the clear fact.
No, no, but there was a prior application and I'm not sure when.
That two of you were aware of in two thousand thirteen, I think it was, when it was denied without prejudice. Those were not approved for changes then. So what the general plan currently has is what's legally in effect at this moment. And all I'm doing is answering your question. Again, you'll make decisions based on the majority commission believing it should be one or the other. I'm just answering that's what our center is encouraging is to use your general plan designations you have now, except for all of the ones that were changed because of logical reasons to change them and weren't prejudging a major project.
Well, I'm, I'm still not clear on this, Mr. Buckley. What is the land use designation under the current nineteen ninety-six plan for, let's say, the Sanguinetti property?
I believe it's resource.
I'll, I'll go to that.
It's not specific plan.
A portion of it is future single-family residential. Um, the rest is, um, I believe it's community center. The gray area, dark gray is community center.
Mr. Buckley, would you be happy with that?
Yes, what was there, what is there now, our center does not object to what's there now. That's what your plan is? We, we recognize it. Is it desired for where there may be better places for that level of development perhaps? But it's already in existence. We're not trying to undo what your general, general plan now has. And we recognize you may change it after the new general plan to something that you feel is even more appropriate.
Would your answer be the same with respect to Copper Valley? That I understand is currently five acre minimum.
So that's a, a question that again was brought up and I think in fairness, I'll be honest. I think that you do need to be fair. And if there's, we're asking for that there, then I think it's only appropriate to have that shown for that property as well. That's a matter of, I'll call it fairness, even though it's the opposite of what we think is appropriate based on that site's location and the road access. But that's a good question. I'll answer it. I think it should be consistent across the board.
And the same would be true for Sawmill.
Correct. We didn't ask for any change from Sawmill. That's what's being changed to the part that is resource protection, production in Sawmill now.
Last chance. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the commission begins to speak among ourselves?
Good evening. Neil McEwen, I'm speaking on my own behalf here. I think there's been so much buildup to this plan. Excuse me, because it's been so long since one has, has been passed, um, that we're potentially losing track of our recent circumstances, especially in D two. That the impact of the Bu Fire, um, was so significant to the community and property owners in that area that, um, the board has declared the state of emergency ever since and continue to do so almost every meeting. And I think some acknowledgement in the general plan as to possibly some sort of, uh, in urban areas, they would call it empowerment zone. Something to that effect that would allow for grants to be written and, uh, possibly supplemental, uh, uh, distribution of money beyond the improving of the roads. Because the thirteen and a half million from PG&E is going to go to the roads. And what good are roads when there's no one living there? I think in other parts of the county where tourism, tourism, sure, that's a great important part of the economy here. And it could be in D two as well. I think there's, uh, pending new ordinances that will make things more viable in District Two again. And then there's the environmental aspect of it as well. I think, uh, the way that the old gulch has revegetated itself is poses a huge fire danger. And I would hate to see the burn scar just turn into the same thing and be threatened again. I know I'll be clearing my land, but it might be helpful to put in, put something in place that could encourage management of the area on all the different levels that are here in the plan. I wish I could be more specific than that, but I would like to just put the idea out there. And so you can consider that and hopefully include something along those lines. I'd appreciate it. Because there, we, there's a lot of people still hurting out there. And, um, only a hundred houses has been rebuilt out of the nine hundred structures that were permitted or not permitted, but total structures. And, um, And the housing element is going to address that, is going to try and address that, but I think you have an opportunity now to acknowledge that we've been through a lot, and there might be ways to help the people that are still here to make D2 a better place from all the way down the list. So, thank you.
Sue Holber, I live in the Burnscar in District 2, in a trailer where my house used to be, on 38.6 acres. And I still don't know what I want to do. And so some of what I want to say is related to what Neil just said, but it's for more than that, and it's for the whole county, and it's for the future of the residents of Calaveras County. All over the world, experiments are being done and new research is coming out about ways of relating to the land to nourish the soil, to rebuild the soil that we have depleted, to improve the health of forests that has been impaired. And it's related to fire safety, it's related to our drought situation, and allowing the land and the forests to regenerate the water cycle, to replenish the aquifers. So I would like for the general plan to include some kind of encouragement, and not abstract encouragement, but something concrete, like he was talking about, I can't remember what you call it for, in urban areas, but for research and experimentation, which could include different ways of people living together, but some kind of designation and support for which, for new information that could enrich the possibilities of the economics of this county by enriching those natural resources, the forests, the grazing lands, the water, and to relate to our agriculture and natural resources in a way that we don't even imagine right now is possible. But to encourage use of all the new information and whatever experiments, and to encourage people here to do those experiments, the Burnscar might be a good place, but I would say not only there, because that land has been so severely damaged, it will be harder to do something there. Was there something else? I think that's enough. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Leslie Cullum, and I'm here for the Calaveras Planning Coalition also. Today you received an email from the CPC, including general plan provisions and mitigation measures for you to consider, including in the conservation and open space element, which I understand you have not reviewed yet. These provisions have been proposed by the CPC during the last six years of this general plan update process. These proposed general plan provisions deal with important issues, including air quality, energy efficiency, recreation, and water supply. These policies may actually help to further mitigate significant greenhouse gas impacts, which the final EIR claimed were unavoidable and without additional feasible mitigation measures. Please consider these general plan provisions and mitigation measures. In Calaveras County, our ability to squeeze more economic production from fewer resources will empower our future prosperity. By hearing and considering these proposals, you on the planning commission will show that you understand the importance of this link between today's resource conservation and tomorrow's economic prosperity. Thank you.
Mostly, I have little comment, mostly question. And this format is not great for that, but it is what it is. My main question is on page 66 of the edits that were published today, on RP4A mineral production. Get to that, I'm going to have to navigate to it. I kind of need to read this, your own language to you to get, in any hope of getting the clarity I'm seeking. Almost there. On the bullet on RP4A, the paragraph reads, with the edit, which is the addition of the words "the production of." Clarify that a conditional use permit is required for all surface and subsurface mining activity unless specifically exempted pursuant to section 17.56.040 or equivalent, and that conditions will be imposed as necessary to protect the production of mineral resources. And I'm sure you discussed this already, right in front of me, and it got by me, and I didn't hear it all, but the insertion of the words "the production of" changes the language to almost the opposite of its original meaning, which would have been to protect the mineral resources. So I'm just curious if that was the intention, to change it from protecting mineral resources to protecting the production of mineral resources? And in addition to that, just to be a nitpicker about language, we don't produce mineral resources. We extract them, we refine them, we do all kinds of stuff, but we don't produce them. And so if it's possible at some point this evening to get clarity on if that was the intention, which it looks like it was, that's all. Thank you.
Can I make one additional comment for a minute or less?
How about a 30 seconds? Come on up.
So I explained earlier, I grew up in the Catskill Mountains, Sullivan County. I see that it's very similar to me living here in Copperopolis, two and a half hour drive, Bay Area, Sullivan County, two and a half hour drive, New York City. And I explained to you, when I grew up, the industry, the only one, was single-family dairy farms. That's history, past history. But if you go back there now, I go back at least once a year, it looks relatively the same. It is a drop-dead, gorgeous, pristine area, but things change. I heard CB Partners earlier, I'm paraphrasing a lot here, I think one of the things they said was, in planning, there needs to be some flexibility. I'll give you a real live example in my analogy here of why that's important. 1969, the Woodstock concert took place.
Excuse me, I'm going to stop you, because I think your point has been made by others. You're not really adding to your...
Just this one, one thing. It took place on Max Yasker's cow pasture, and it was over, but thousands of people continued to come every year just by themselves. So people such as yourself said, maybe there's something we could do with all these people coming. You can go on Google right now, and you can see a huge cultural arts center sitting there on the property with cow pastures still all around it. So that's flexibility, but still supporting tourism. All they did was make a paved road into it. That's the point I wanted to make.
Hi. Unless there's somebody new who'd like to speak. We're going to go ahead and bring it back to the commission, but I think we'll take a quick, maybe 15-minute break. So, yeah, I might have to use my gavel. I scared myself. So the commission is now going to take a quick look at the possible use of the general plan section that Peter found for us, that was suggested by the public, that we take another look at and see if maybe it would be a better, more complete section for us. So...
Which one are we looking at?
This, it's in a document that Peter sent out today, and it's from the old, an old round kind of introduction section. Talks about the purpose of the general plan and how it can be used by different groups.
It was a one-page document, I think it was attachment five to the memo that I sent?
Yes, it's attachment five.
It's one document I did not bring.
Well, then maybe we'll skip this and talk about this tomorrow morning, since now it seems prepared.
I have a question arising from the, from the public comments. I wonder if you could provide us with a, with a table of the properties we're dealing with on these future specific plans? What the 1996 plan designation was for that property, or is for that property? What the closest designation on table LU1 is to that 1996 designation? And when was the future specific plan label put on these, on our current map?
Sure. So there are two sites, the Sawmill Ranch and the Sanguinetti, or Sawmill Lake and Sanguinetti Ranch property down in the Copperopolis area. And so there's the one up at the, the, to the northern end, these parcels right in this area here where the cursor is, the actual future specific plan is this area that's got the hash mark in these five parcels. What has been requested by the owners is that this portion of one parcel, that five-acre lot, this parcel, this parcel, and this parcel, along with this little portion of this larger parcel, also be included. The previous designation for this area, as shown, zoom in just a little bit closer, was, for the most part, resource production, or what was called a natural resources agricultural lands under the old plan, with, except for this area right here, which was future single-family residential.
Which was what?
Future single-family residential. And the future single-family residential is a fairly broad range of development, residential development, depending on the ability to provide water, sewer, and roads. So it could be everything from, I think, five units an acre up to five acre parcels, depending on public services. This designation was added by the planning commission in 2016, I think it was the fall of 2016, when we were deliberating the land use map and the land use element to prepare the public review draft. The most similar, and this would apply to both of these, would probably be a mixed-use designation of community center. The reason the planning commission selected this future single-family residential designation was to designate the whole area of community center would provide either the whole thing could be developed commercially, whole thing could be developed, developed in multifamily housing, single-family housing, or mixed thereof, with a much higher density, intensity of use than what the property owner was suggesting, that this would be the most appropriate use of this site. And so we decided to come up with this future single-family designation, or future specific plan, I'm sorry, future specific plan designation, as a means to limit the type of development since we didn't, or the extent of development, since we didn't have a land use category that fit it, other than the mixed use, which would provide a much broader, a much larger capacity for development. This is not unusual for general plans, most counties have some similar type of designation, where there is areas that they've identified as being appropriate for some sort of future mixed-use development, but, and identified a limit or a cap on the amount of development that would be something different than just simply saying this is going to be single-family residential, or commercial, or mixed use.
But now the part that was the natural resources designation?
All of this green area here.
But that would allow higher density?
No, no, this was under, this isn't, this is the current general plan.
Yep.
If we were to come up with something other than future single, if it was determined that this area is appropriate for future development, which is really no different than any other designation that we have, other than it's somewhat unique, is that, you know, we've identified areas where, in, say, Valley Springs, or near Murphys, or any other community, this is the area where we want to see residential development, and we've designated, you know, 40, 100 acres, whatever it might be, as appropriate for single-family residential development. There's no development plans on it right now, but someone could come in with a project that would say, you know, it's consistent with the land use designation, we'd still need to go through whatever kind of environmental review, project review, but it would be consistent with the general plan. We're saying here is an area that's appropriate for this type of use.
Let me get straight, though, as far as the two types of designations that were on the two parts of that property, those were pre-existing, the application?
This, this map?
This was in 1996.
This is a 1996 general plan land use designation.
And that's, that's the way it existed.
That's what it is today, yes.
Yeah, and, and that's the way it always existed.
Yes, well, since 1996.
Yeah.
It could have been different before that, but this is, this is the current plan we're operating under.
Right, right, okay.
For the Sanguinetti property... I'm going to sort of quickly sort of flash, unfortunately with the old map, it doesn't show the property boundaries very well. The area in question is sort of this general area here where the cursor is, the existing general plan shows us a portion, future single-family residential, and a portion of that is community center, which is, you know, primarily the higher-density residential and commercial uses. And there is what's proposed now. So again, this was something that the prior planning commission felt that was appropriate for a mixed-use type of development. We didn't have a specific kind of land use designation that fit what they had suggested was appropriate for this site, that the commission agreed upon. And so coming up with the future single-family residential designation with limitations of the number of units, how much commercials were... of the number of units, how much commercial square footage was what was determined to be the best way to say this is appropriate for this type of development, but we want to put limitations on it, not just say the whole thing is appropriate for mixed use community center.
And when was that designation?
Same time during the planning commission hearings in 2016.
And the equivalent to, in the current land use map, not current, the one in our draft?
Well, again, there isn't an equivalent. The closest we would have-
Equivalent to what?
The previous.
To the 1996?
On the 96 map, this is what it shows here, and it's future single-family residential. So it could be, depending on the ability to provide access, water, and sewer, single-family residential subdivisions. And community area, which is a mixed-use designation of commercial, higher-density residential. So this, the western portion of the property was a community center.
And the equivalents in our current, in our figure LU1 designations?
This would be, well, this is, this is where it differs, and the plan is different. So this basically says that this is all appropriate, all the yellow is appropriate for single-family residential depending on what kind of infrastructure is available. Where the current, the proposed plan is saying, is more precise, this beige color is low-density residential, this is medium-density residential, this is more low-density down here that sort of reflects existing development pattern, we have rural residential elsewhere. So we've differentiated between the densities more precisely rather than say it's all residential depending on what kind of infrastructure you can provide.
Well, now, now I really am getting confused. Is all of the Sanguinetti Ranch area that is proposed, will be proposed to be subject to development, is it all currently listed as future-specific plan?
The 900 and some acres that is not in the Williamson Act, yes.
So I guess back on Sawmill, the natural, the portion of that, is there a portion of the land that is, is listed as future-specific plan is under the 1996 general plan as some sort of natural resources designation?
The majority of the land owned by the CBE, whatever their name is, the property that is both in the future-specific plan designation as well as the lands that they want to see in it, all but about 10 to 15 acres in this upper quadrant of the property is designated natural resource lands agriculture. This other portion, let me go back to the existing general plan, shows it as being future single-family residential.
And so the natural resources designation of the 1996 general plan is similar to resource production or?
Resource production or working lands, it sort of varies a little bit.
I pity people who are trying to read, well, what's Leonard getting at? I'm getting at the facts. Relax.
So there were four parcels that were not included. Can you point to them?
There was one, two, three, and four, as well as these two small portions of these two larger parcels here. So there's a creek that runs down through here, and then the outfall of the lake comes down this way. And so it was, I, it may have been a mapping error that it was the intent that this was also, everything on the east side of the lake and the creek was going to be not included, but this is the way the map came out and we didn't either not catch it. The issue that has been brought up from their perspective, I think, is that they would like to be able to include these properties in the overall plan. I don't believe they've requested any increase in the density proposed, the, I think it was 580 units. I could be wrong on that. But by including these areas, it wouldn't necessarily increase the intensity of development, just provide a larger area that that development could be, you know, spread across clustered however. There are a number of constraints on that site, as were noted in the prior project that went through the process of wetlands and rare plants and other things that constrain development.
Would it now, acquiring that land, would that provide better access to, or access or egress from, make it safer for the property owners in case of, you know, some buyer dangers or something like that sort?
Any development within, whether it's in this area or it covers the whole area, it's going to have to develop its own circulation plan as part of any kind of future development. There is Little John Road that, you know, fronts, you know, the entire west, western portion of the property. So everything would pretty much have to come out to Little John. I don't know if there's an ability to connect any of these roads, which might provide a secondary access. That's something that we'd have to look at more, more closely at the time of any future development. Again, we're just sort of looking at the very broad picture here of a general plan. Is this an area that is appropriate for the type and intensity and density of development given its location and all the other constraints and opportunities we'd look at for where it's appropriate or not appropriate for development?
Any comments, Kelly?
With respect to the Sanguinetti property, I think that the existing future plan designation that's in the draft ought to remain because I think the comments from Mr. Coff makes sense and the comments from Peter Mauer makes sense. The land use designations that we have don't really fit what they want to do. And the environmental concerns will be taken care of when they come up with their specific plans. With respect to Sawmill, I'm inclined to include the parcels for the reasons that they've stated, which is it will allow the development to include adequate community park space, open space, and a community recreational facility. And it seems to me it may help on the circulation end of things. So I'm in favor of keeping Sawmill as future-specific plan and add these additional parcels for the flexibility that it gives them. With respect to Copper Valley, which is the other one that's been brought up, since the only objector to keeping Mr. Brunker's property with its 1996 designation has said it's okay if he keeps it, I'm inclined to let him keep it. And I think that was five acre minimum.
Well, I think the point of a general plan is for us to try and direct the development to the locations we feel is most appropriate. So I don't have a problem with making use of the future-specific plan designation to do that. And fortunately or unfortunately, we only have the two areas that this applies to. With respect to the, what we're calling the Sanguinetti property, I think it's pretty clear that that's an appropriate place for a resort development of some kind and some housing. And I think that it's clear in other pieces of our general, our draft general plan that we would like to encourage more mixed-use development. So it seems like we need a specific plan in order to direct future developers to implement something along those lines as opposed to just building a whole bunch of housing, which a whole bunch of housing doesn't really help us other than during construction while it provides a bunch of construction jobs. What we really want to do is, is look for a way to make a community viable on its own. Want to reduce the number of trips driving around, and we do want to attract tourism here. So I have no real concerns about the Sanguinetti. And whether those are the perfect boundaries or not, I don't know, but those are the parcel boundaries from what I can see. So that makes sense to me. With regard to Sawmill, I feel that this, all the same arguments apply. I think I would like to look a little more closely at the individual parcels and how those decisions were made of what to include and not include. I can understand the arguments in both directions. I think it is an appropriate place for a future-specific plan. I think that is an area directly, you know, on pretty, pretty good roads that have been recently improved and right adjacent to that new town center. So it makes good sense to, I mean, we've said this all over our plan, we want to encourage development close to the town centers for all those same reasons. So I personally just feel like I need to wrap my head a little better around the specific parcels.
Well, I haven't made up my mind yet. And I don't think I have to tonight.
Nope.
My concern is the future-specific plan looks like a special deal. It looks like we're promising something that maybe we shouldn't be promising. On the other hand, I take your, both of your points, I think are very well made. If we stick designations on the, on these properties that are from our current proposed drafts map, we may well be providing the sort of development that is, or at least permitting the sort of development that we really would not prefer to the sort of tailored mixed-use development that the future-specific plans offer. So I, I will await your further study on this and make my final decision later.
You know, I believe in the mixed development, have the necessities close by, which would cut down on certain portions of, or update, or, or proposed plan, you know, help with the greenhouse gas, the circulation. And we want to encourage growth, but smart growth. And I think this would be a good area for smart growth because some of the infrastructure's already there. But there is, I do agree with Michelle, there is certain reason why some of them lots were designated separate. So we do need to look into that a little more in depth and not jump, jump ahead to just for the sake of development. So I think that, yeah, well, it does need further review, so.
And I have one more question for Peter, and that is the footnote to the land use designations figure, which states for particular parcels, this is what's in mind and this sort of thing. Does the, is the effect of that to say we're fine with that development? Or is that subject to review when, when it's once again presented to the planning commission?
Well, that would be the limits of development, just as we would have, say, if you had a 40-acre tract of land that was designated low-density residential, six units an acre, you could have 240 lots would be the maximum number of units. This establishes a cap on this number of units. How it's distributed, you know, could be, could be less than that, it could be no more than that, just as a-
But it could, from the developer's point of view, it can at least be that large?
Yes.
Not at least.
Well, no, that is the maximum.
I mean, that's the maximum, but we would not be, unless we amended the general plan later to undercut what those figures say, it is basically saying, under this general plan, you can have at least that much, I won't use at least. You can, your top development is that.
So in order to approve a specific plan, you need to make a finding that's consistent with the general plan.
Yeah.
And so that would be the parameters in which, I mean, the very broad parameters that, that would constitute finding consistency. Now, we'd have to look at all the other policies and measures of the plan, you know, does it, does it fit? And what are the constraints on the site? So that's a whole nother project, you know, it's a lengthy review process to go through a specific plan. We're also saying that a specific plan is necessary to develop that. So we actually have the level of review necessary to look at the project as a whole and not just sort of a piecemeal approach to it. So that's the other, in my mind, benefit of having a future-specific plan designation is that it is then planned as a whole as opposed to just individual parcels coming in and meeting the minimum or maximum density requirements without sort of a comprehensive planning approach.
Could it also require minimum levels of open space? I mean, could there be other guidelines to the developer about the expectations for that plan area? Like, could you require that it include multifamily housing?
We could.
I mean, we don't want to hamstring some future developer to exact proportions of different development, but I do think that it's not our job here to preset it up for them so it's exactly what they're hoping to do. But I think it is our job to look at what our communities need and try to make sure that those elements are included in that future-specific plan. So we wouldn't want to see them come in and, so great, we have this future-specific plan, but they just come in and decide to build up, here's my 240 units of, you know, mainstream residential, when the whole point of designating it was to get something for the community in return, to make that community stronger, you know?
Yes, you know, I suppose that we could develop a more detailed range of constraints and rather not just, not just a maximum, but maybe a minimum of certain things if we want to have, you know, a certain number that gets into more of the pre-planning detail level that, you know, through a specific plan, you know, an applicant will propose whatever they think is most beneficial to them.
Or could we have goals for it or something, just to heads up, because it may, you know, by the time this project is happening, somebody else could own that land, you know, we're with this, we're not planning for a particular developer, we're planning for the community. And so I think we'd want to give anybody a sense of what they could expect to be approved.
So there could be something that has a certain percentage of open space, for example?
Correct.
Or a certain percentage of it as multifamily housing or, you know, whatever, you know, the hard pressed is sort of come up with what that- I'd be hard pressed to sort of come up with what that is, but certainly I'm sure there are ways to do that.
Do we need figures at all? Do we can just, can we just describe, you know, that we're, we're open to an application for a mixed-use development with these various elements in it, but consider what they propose at the time without, at this point, guaranteeing any certain levels or...
Like, it's expected to include these elements in the design?
It could be more broadly defined that way. I think it's important to put a maximum cap on it. I think that's because of the necessary analysis that we've done in the EIR and to, you know, sort of assure the community that this is what, you know, the maximum would be. But I think it's also, I think that's probably not a bad idea to have even just sort of a more generalized discussion of these components will be included. And it could be, you know, sort of a separate set of policies, you know, rather than just a footnote at the end of the table, we could actually have a section in the plan that talks about, you know, future specific plans and what the policies are regarding that.
I think I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. I don't, I don't feel that, we don't want to give a blank check and we don't want to uh...
We don't want to design it for them.
Design it for them or mess up what their plans might be. And so it's, I understand the reasons for a designation of future specific plan. It's just I don't, you know, I, I think giving some maximums, I think is a good idea, but it's not, this isn't the time to design that development.
No, no, and again, we don't know what will be in great demand at that time, so we don't want to be too specific.
My really basic question. Any future specific plan to be carried into effect has to get the approval or the recommendation of the planning commission and then the board of supervisors, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So why don't we let the developers come up with what they think is the best way to do this, because that's their business figuring those things out? And if the planning commission doesn't like it, we can tell them we don't like it, you're going to have to do something a little different here. Why wouldn't that work?
I think it helps the developer to understand what the expectations are. And if, if, you know, to be sort of crazy, you know, we expect a certain amount of open space and they put none in, it's all developed, and we say, that doesn't meet our expectation. No, they said, well, okay, then we'll put in 10%. And they, we come back and they say, no, that's not good enough. You know, I, I think it helps to have some parameters in there. I, I, I agree with you to a point, and as I was making this argument of why we need to have it, I was realizing I was boxing myself into a corner by saying, okay, well, what is that percentage going to be? I don't know. And this is a complaint that I've heard for many, many years, long before I came here, about going through a public hearing process without knowing what is expected by the agency. And it's like, well, what's your favorite color? Blue? No, it's green. You know, that was the example that was used as part of, you know, how ridiculous it can feel sometimes as to, you know, what is expected of an applicant for a project. So to the degree that we can provide as much detail that, as we can, that helps with the applicant knowing how much, what, what do I need to do to get this project approved by the county and still meet my need for a return on investment and, you know, developing something that people want to live in or shop in or recreate in? So I agree with you to a point, but the flip side of that is the developers will often want to know what are the expectations. I don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars designing something to be told multiple times, we don't like it, go back.
Well, to a certain extent, that's done with the maximum densities, because that automatically tells you there, there's going to be X amount of open space, at least.
I think those are very different things. I think that if you use that argument, that's how you end up with a sea of five-acre parcels when what you're really looking for and what we've said we want in our plan is to cluster that development, to protect some of the biological resources, to have connectivity for wildlife, just, I don't know that any of those are going to be a perfect fit for these particular projects, but those are the kinds of things we're talking about. So I, I think that really we want to encourage them to maybe consider somewhat smaller, I don't know what the right size on here is, so I'm making this up, hypothetical, you know, smaller parcels with a big, broad range of open space that runs through the center that is maintained by their homeowners association or whatever it is. I mean, they can make those proposals. But we also have said that, some people have said housing is a problem, housing's not really a problem, affordable housing is a problem here. And we have plenty of developable land right now without ever creating another lot, you know, for the immediate future. And, you know, what we're hoping to see is a diversity of housing at, at different levels so that there is housing also for the people who are working there in Copperopolis Town Center or whatever community we're in. But I mean, I think the point of having this designation is to send that message that we're looking for you to develop a community here. And the developers probably know more about what's going to work for them than we do, so we don't want to just box them into, okay, along this street, you're going to do this. But we do want to give them a heads up that the expectation is that they're going to try to include some of these items and that we're going to expect to see some of that. And they can always come back to the planning commission and to the board of supervisors and say, that just doesn't work. We, you know, we've tried, we've done this, we've done that, so instead, we're proposing to do this over here and, you know, maintain this area over here instead. But, but we, I think we have to give them a, a sense of our expectation. Also, we've heard this over and over again from the public, that we should have a menu of mitigation measures, that we should have these things that would help a developer understand what will be expected of them, what will be acceptable. And I think this is just the same kind of thing. But I agree, we don't want to try to tell them exactly what works for their particular project.
So Peter's suggestion that perhaps we should get out of a footnote and get into policies and implementation measures, I think is where we're headed at this point. I don't intend to be the one that drafts those.
And I just want to mention that, you know, there were a couple comments made that, oh, well, if we just let, I'd be happy if we just left on the 1996 designations. Well, that's not what we've done on any other parcel. We, you know, the previous planning commission and the board of supervisors and the public spent a lot of time looking at maps and making suggestions and in many cases changed something to a lower intensity allowable development in the future. I mean, this has been ratcheted back from our 1996 plan, so I don't think it makes sense to say, oh, well, we don't want to see future specific plan mentioned anywhere, which might be a bad, maybe that wasn't the perfect label, maybe we could have picked something that didn't sound so much leading to a future project. But the point was that we're planning for the future, and I, Kelly has spent lots of time on this.
Well, I guess, I guess the first question is whether we have a consensus on Sawmill and Sanguenetti, that future specific plan is the correct designation, leaving the question of the four Sawmill parcels for more consideration.
Double in the details.
And somebody apparently is going to undertake to draft some parameters for these developments, but I'm not at all sure that we're going to get that done in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I, I think there's, you know more, it seems to me we could draft some general guidelines.
Certainly, if that's the direction of the commission that you would like to see that, I can certainly work on that. It may not be available by the next meeting, definitely not, not tomorrow, but, you know, there's, we got hearings tomorrow, it could be Friday, and then the first part of next week to come up with something.
I think we don't have one on Friday, but we have two days held aside for next week.
We have next week, we have Thursday and Friday scheduled, yes.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see that. I just think it needs to be clearer, you know, that, that, just what are our policies and implementation in this, in this area of the future specific plan? And I think that those, I hope can be drafted so it would apply to, you know, other applicants in the future that were, that were dealing with this sort of situation. We need the, need the flexibility, which we keep talking about, and we ought to be able to figure out a way to provide it.
I guess that raises the question, would, would there be one set of criteria for Sawmill and one set of criteria for Sanguenetti, or is this going to be a broader-based sort of here are some general guidelines that would apply to both?
That's what I would like to see, if it's appropriate.
The latter.
Yeah.
I, I think that it's going to be difficult to come up with something that applies to everything that also gives any reasonable direction.
Well, I mean, with development, you don't want to hobble the developers and then we don't want to give them an open slate just to build whatever they want. But if we give them some guidelines with some mitigation, so, you know, for every 25 houses, you have to put in 2,000 square feet of open space or something like that, but leave it open-ended where it's not feasible, they have to offset with recreation or a park area or something in that, that area that were, it leaves them capable of designing something that's desirable to people, that accommodates the, the density of, that we want to create these urban centers with everything where people can walk or ride a bicycle to. But, you know, what we're trying to do in a broad sense is walk razor's edge, try not to hobble growth and development, but then again, preserve the quality of life that we enjoy in this county. So the policy, it's, I don't know if it can be done that quickly, but, I mean, there is, we could get a good start on it.
I actually think you said something that if you kind of described a broad range of things that could become a piece of it, so that you, you covered things that maybe not all of them will be expected in any given development because it might not be appropriate. Like, we're certainly not going to worry about watercraft at Sawmill, that little pond, but, you know, on Tulak, they are, they're going to have a different mix of recreational, probably a much bigger recreational component there and tourist component. But if we described generally all the different kinds of things that could be included and considered, and we could leave it maybe more up to them to pick which components are appropriate to their project, and, and even in terms of the open space, I don't, I think it would be very difficult to say, you, you need to provide this many square feet per, when it should really be appropriate to the particular...
I was just throwing something out there, examples kind of thing.
Well, I think I'm probably a minority of one here, but I, I think this is not that workable. I mean, I, I think that you really have to wait and see what the developer comes up with and take a look at it. I mean, it's pretty clear, it's not going to be, you know, every house, every five acres is going to cut it, it would have been single-family residential. So I think this is a little too ambitious, quite frankly, particularly to try to get it done by, what, first week of June? I mean, there's a lot of other things that have to be done here.
I think it's, it's an issue that drew a lot of attention. There was a lot of interest in it, so it might be worth taking a stab at, seeing what we could come up with that we could all feel is a good direction.
And we all, really, amending the general plan is not like amending the United States Constitution.
Right.
It just takes a resolution of the board of supervisors. So if we take a stab at it and it's not perfect and three months from now there's some need to, to refine it, I, I don't see where that would shock the conscience. So I, I'd like to see an attempt. And I will try to be kind in my judgment.
Well, I will do the best I can.
Thank you. If that's, if that's the consensus of the board.
I think I saw three heads nodding, I tell you, it was right.
And we'll be back here tomorrow at 9:00 AM with coffee in hand, and it may be that some member of the public will have an idea or thought that they'd like to share about this at that time. You know, maybe we could plan on having a little discussion on it before we move on to the next element.
That sounded close to being a wrap-up comment.
I'm kind of looking around to see if this, would anybody else like to share anything?
Nope, on this subject, no.
On any other subject before we call it an evening?
I, I could live with waiting for another day.
Okay. So...
So then tomorrow, we're going to talk about the using the general plan document first thing and the further discussion on, on this item before we jump into the conservation of space, elements.
All right.
Okay.
So we will continue this hearing to tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everybody.